It is exactly 6:30, so I'm going to call this Celine City Council work meeting to order. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Dillon, Girbom, McClellan, Rhodes, Tahar, and CEO. From city staff, we have city manager Campell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, city engineer Superintendent Rubel, and Deputy Treasurer McDonough. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd please sign in the back, we would appreciate it. We also have two guests from Tetra Tech. We welcome you here this evening, gentlemen. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, unless there are amendments.
So moved.
As submitted by Dillon, seconded by McClellan. All those in favor approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. I believe, Mr. Rubel, you passed out one supplemental this evening. Is it this Excel spreadsheet?
Okay.
And then our guests from Tetra Tech have a, or provided to you in your packet that should have been delivered to your home on Thursday or Friday, I guess it doesn't matter, this very comprehensive document that I think will, is it identical to the PowerPoint that's going to be presented?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Excellent. Well, I guess with that, again, gentlemen, Vic, Brian, appreciate you being here. Mr. Campell, can I turn it over to you, and then we'll go ahead and get started?
And again, we are recording this, right? So please try your best to speak into the microphone when you're giving the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make this very brief, not too long ago, but we needed to, it's been quite a while since the city has reviewed our connection fees for our water and sewer connections. So, different, this is, of course, different from the utility rates that we as, for instance, residents get in our quarterly bills. This is, this is to connect to, to the system. So, but after a very thorough review, and I won't steal any, I won't go into the bolt decision of that nature, but I know Tetra Tech has done a, done a lot of work, a lot of good work on this. So unless there's any questions of me, I'm going to turn it over to Gary and Tetra Tech, and then also Joanne from the Treasurer's office as we go forward.
Mr. Rubel, Mr. Gary. You see the floor.
As Todd mentioned, the last time we updated the connection fees was probably around 2010, or no, excuse me, about 2006. So you can see they're going to be somewhat out of date, and that's why there's probably the increased amount that's determined by the study performed by Vic Cooper-Washer, who obtained a lot of input from city staff, Superintendent Skull, DPD Director Fordyce, Joanne McDonough also, so we could do a very accurate inventory of all the assets not only added in the last 10 years, but also the renewed value of those that were in place, and subsequently may have been replaced, and also deleted. So we did several iterations of this, and now we are at the final point, and Vic has done a very commendable study. He's probably one of foremost experts at this. He travels the country and is very capable of coming up with a very good connection fee study program.
Thank you.
I can go directly to here. Okay.
That microphone's on Vic, so you're welcome to use the podium if that's your preference.
Yeah, if I could.
Whatever you prefer. And Vic, and Brian, we'll let you present and go through your PowerPoint and his analysis, and then the conclusion of that will open it up for questions from the group, if that's okay.
Well, first of all, I want to thank city staff for doing a great job. These types of studies are only as good as the data that we get from the community, and we got great data from the community and very timely to do this study. So the agenda is in front of you there in the power, in the handout, the overview, the bolt opinion, the elements of how to do this, the process, the results, a comparison of minimum fees, Celine compared to Ann Arbor, the benefits, and what's next. So a connection fee is similar to a phrase, "system development charge." Connection fee is not your quarterly water and sewer rate, it is the fee that a new user pays to connect to the system. And the system must be oversized to be able to accommodate new users. And these new users must pay their proportionate, or they should pay their proportionate share for the, to be able to hook up to the existing infrastructure. Connection fees and, and rates are considered user fees. And in 1998, there was a case in the Michigan Supreme Court called Bolt versus City of Lansing that described what a valid user fee should be. And one of the criteria is, is that a valid user fee should be proportional to the necessary cost of the service. And so the study that we prepared complies with that guidance. And so the study involved gathering data, reviewing the data, looking at usage, the capital asset inventory, looking at original costs, then taking these costs and projecting replacement costs, and then looking at the outstanding debt principle on your outstanding bonds. We looked at the system inventory, we compiled all the original costs of the assets that are still used and useful, that are in service, calculated the replacement cost, and looked at the current capital improvement costs. So what we do is we take the total replacement cost plus the current capital improvements, we deduct the outstanding principle. On the water side, we divide the water system result by the capacity of the water system, expressed in residential units. And on the sewer side, we do the same thing. We take the total value of the sewer system and divide through by the capacity of the The results on the water side, the, the connection fees are per meter size. So in the middle column, you have the current connection fees that were adopted in 2006, and then the calculated water connection fees, and these are what we call the maximum fees that we can justify by our calculations. So for a three-quarter inch meter on the water side, whoops, on the water side, it goes from 1841 to 20474 for the three-quarter inch meter. And then increases for the larger meters based on the capacity of the larger meters in proportion to the capacity. On the sewer side, it increases from 3704 to 6243. And again, increases in capacity, in proportion to the capacity of the larger meter sizes. So the total fee today is 5,000, 545, and that max, proposed maximum is 8,717, which is simply the sum of the water and the sewer. So how do these minimum fees, let's say for the three-quarter inch, compare to some other communities? You see the current and the calculated, and we compare to, say, Ann Arbor, and the calculated for Celine is 8717, and Ann Arbor right now, it's 8678. It's very comparable, it just worked out that way. Brighton is 10,000, Chelsea is just under 8,000, Mason 3,500, Mylan 4,200, and Williamston 8,160. So that's a comparison to a few communities. This is on the, the minimum meter size.
Vic, could I interrupt and ask a question here, before we get too far along?
Sure.
I was just wondering, on these other communities, their dollar amounts or totals, do you know how recently those have been established, or some of those due for updates?
I think these are all current. Some of them are older than others. I believe Ann Arbor might be effective July 1, but some of the others may have been unchanged for several years. One of the items regarding connection fees is many times they are set and not changed for several years, as opposed to quarterly water rates that are changed, you know, annually typically.
Okay, I was just wondering how current they were. The other question that I had for Celine, does the, do those proposed fees include the cost of the meter and the installation of it also? As I've noticed, some of the other communities do.
Yeah, I believe it's in the first table in the report. There's mention of that.
Do you think that's something you're going to give through later?
No, 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 I wasn't. On Table A of the report, we note that the current, Celine, current and proposed connection fees do not include the cost of the water meter or the cost to make the physical connection. And then in Table B, I think there's reference to how each of the other communities handle those costs.
And what the others seem to include the cost of the water meter and the connection fee, so we're not quite apples to apples here, little difference.
Okay, thank you.
For example, one of the things we did was to compare meter size to meter size for the proposed fees for Celine compared to Ann Arbor. And you'll see for the first four meter sizes, again, it just worked out that way, that the proposed fees for Celine track very closely with what's in effect right now for Ann Arbor. They diverge in the larger meter sizes with Celine being lower. So the benefits of the connection fees is to charge new users based on the cost to provide them with the service when they're ready to connect. And the concept is to promote the concept that growth is, is supported by those users that are driving the need for growth. The, the fees are more defendable because you now have a detailed inventory of your system, that if the fees were challenged, you have a historical documentation that you can bring forth to defend the calculations. One thing that we find in some cases is that the outstanding debt principle is not deducted when we've seen other fees like this calculated. And you deduct the outstanding principle because you're paying for the outstanding principle after you hook up in your quarterly rates, so you pull that cost out of the calculation. So why are the fees going up? Well, the current fees were adopted 10 years ago. The replacement cost of the system has increased, and this time, we've had a much more thorough compilation of the value of the assets. City staff did a great job in providing us with the detailed inventory of all the assets that are in use. So as to the question, should the calculated maximum amount be adopted, all we're saying is that this is a maximum defendable rate, and the city could choose to adopt this, or choose to do it incrementally over time, or just choose to maintain the current fees. What we do recommend is, is that the city not adopt fees that exceed these maximum And that's it. Any questions?
So Vic, the, the balance of the binders is the data that you, you use to, to make these recommendations, is that correct?
Right. The material in the binder is, in fact, the report, which consists of a Word document, followed by a series of linked Excel spreadsheets that city staff can use in the future and update.
Very good. Appreciate that. Mr. Brian Rubel, if you can make any comments at this time?
No, I, Vic and I worked together on this, and I certainly echo his appreciation for city staff. They had quite a bit of work to do to come up with these results, and were very responsive and accurate. We put them through some phases, and they, they did a great job, so. No, I, I'm very comfortable that this is a defendable approach, and, you know, Vic is really, as Gary indicated, really a regional, if not a national, expert in these, so this follows accepted industry standards for this type of analysis.
Very good. Deputy Treasurer McDonough, I know you assisted with this initiative. You could make any comments at this time?
Well, aside from the fact that the study is 10 years old, so of course you'd expect the rates to go up by that factor. We have over the last few years really compiled the city's asset listing, so as Vic had mentioned, that there's more probably exact information than they had before, but 10 years ago. We researched some of the equipment, streets and lines and stuff like that, lines and things that were donated or paid by other people, took that out of the equation, it was part of the regional meeting, our rates were a little higher than this. We went back and kind of tweaked things and looked aggressively at some of the data. And then we went back and, we recalculated, like, our average usage for Celine as opposed to like the industry average, and we gave it quite lower than other people. And so I went back and did three years to make sure it kind of makes sense again. So I think the numbers that we're showing are solid. And he said we can defend them.
Very good. Vic, you're welcome to stay up there, or you can take a seat. We'll open it up for questions now. I seem to always start on my left, so I'm going to start on my right. We'll start with Ms. McClellan, and then Ms. Dillon, and work our way around to Mr. CEO, and then with Councilman Tahar. So Ms. McClellan, the floor is yours for any questions for city staff, either Treasurer's Department, Building and Engineering Department, excuse me, or our guests from Tetra Tech.
David asks, just one question that I was going to bring up. Where would you, if the, the water meter and connection fees are included in the other communities, how, is there a possibility to break that out so that we look at numbers? I mean, how much are we talking for those fees?
I really can't answer that question, and, you know, for specific costs for each community, we'd have to research that. The concept of a connection fee is really limited to the, the infrastructure that's been built, the treatment plant, the pipes, that by nature has to be slightly oversized, or oversized to accommodate new users. And so the, the cost when you connect is the cost to buy into that infrastructure. And so I think there were some communities that, in their connection fee, will toss in the cost of the meter, or toss in a dollar amount to make the physical connection. But the pure calculation is to just get at that number. What is the value of the infrastructure that you're connecting into? And I, I think that's what we're trying to do here. So those additional costs for the meter for making the physical connection from the street to the house are just treated separately. And you can research those costs for other communities and compare them to what you charge for those fees to see where you stand, if that's what you're getting at.
Right. Yeah, I just wondered what, what that.
I don't have those numbers.
Could I rephrase perhaps the question? What, and this would be addressed more to Gary Rubel, I think, what, what is the approximate average cost for a three-quarter inch meter and the installation to a single-family residence?
The, that's, Gary, you lost. Make sure. The three-quarter and one-inch are basically the same, same cost. They start at around $350, and the reason, another reason the meters aren't put into this connection fee is that from time to time, we actually may change the manufacturer. Annually, the meters fluctuate in cost, sometimes they increase, sometimes they decrease, and it's just the product value. It's, it's not a system value, as Vic mentioned. So it, and, and it's just like the permit costs, you know, when they come in and pull a plumbing permit, you know, that's, that fee is also associated with other work, like the inspection work, and not into the system value.
Is that 350 just the meter, or is that the average cost for installation also? I'm trying to get at what the total cost is to a single-family residence.
Right. The installation, actually, the developer does all the plumbing. He, he obtains a permit, he installs the plumbing, the harness, the rack that it goes into. We basically furnish the meter for that price. We have to purchase it and furnish it because it's a city standard piece of equipment.
350's average total cost?
Right.
Okay. Go ahead, Vic, and then.
Brian, just in Table B of the report that folds out, you'll see that there's a note above every, one of these communities, that basically says the cost at each community for the meter and to make the physical connection is in addition to these fees. They're not included with them.
In other words, I think the comparison was apples to apples. Okay. Just wanted to, very good. Ms. McClellan, do you want to continue? Can you answer some questions?
That was it for me.
That's it? Okay, Ms. Dillon?
I wanted to ask, on, this page? Celine connection fees versus Ann Arbor. The first four, we start off pretty close, and then there's just sort of a steep change. What, why is there such a difference?
I, I don't know, because I don't know how the, how Ann Arbor calculated theirs. It appears that on their base fee, we, in the business, we call the fee for the smallest meter size the base fee, and, you know, the industry standard we use in our reports is that you take the capacity of the water meter in gallons per minute each size, and the ratio of that capacity to the smallest meter is the ratio that you charge for the larger meter, because you're, you're basically providing a person with greater capacity, and so they pay in proportion to that capacity. I, I don't know what methodology Ann Arbor followed to calculate theirs, so I can't answer that question. I haven't seen the report that that calculation's based on. It just worked out that by coincidence, that the first four meter sizes are very comparable. That was never planned or anything, it just worked out that way.
So, but Celine is using a standard, you know, accepted practice on this, so, okay, so we're not significantly lower overall, just compared to Ann Arbor? Meaning we're not discounting?
No.
In any way?
No. The, these calculations are based on the American Water Works Association Manual M1 in terms of how to calculate connection fees. So I'm very comfortable with the methodology.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one, on the next page, where it says Slide 12, we didn't actually have one. Were we supposed to have something? Okay.
Please just turn that page.
No, that's okay, just making sure that there wasn't something missing. And then Gary, were you going to go through this at some point, after we go through this? Okay, then I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. CEO, you want to grab the microphone from Councilman Girbom?
Thank you. My question was on Mr. Rubel's sheet that he just provided us, so.
Well, let's continue to work my way around the table, Mr. CEO, and then we'll let Mr. Gary Rubel have the floor, and then we'll entertain any questions you may have. Mr. Girbom?
From my own perspective, trying to understand, I guess, the ratio between what we charge in our normal usage fees and what would be charged as a result of putting in new meters, how much of our replacement cost is included in our current user fees in terms of existing users? Do you have a percentage of that?
No. In the current water and sewer rates, the quarterly bills, in your budget, you have dollar amounts for equipment replacement, which is a factor in calculating rates. But the, the, the cost to buy into the existing infrastructure is, is not included in your quarterly rates. That's for, that's what this study is for. It's for a new person coming in to buy into what's in there today, that's been, technically has to be oversized to accommodate their, their, their needs. That's what they're buying into. Trying to think of a better analogy to what we're doing here, but it's, it's apples and oranges comparing the quarterly rates to the connection fee.
But at some point, there should be something where the existing users would help them to pay for the replacement of the existing. I know what you're saying, but there's also a component of which we're assigning to the existing users, and so even though we have fewer capacity, I, you're buying into that little capacity.
You, you could make the argument that, as existing users are paying an equipment replacement amount in their rates, they are basically paying for the equipment portion of depreciation. I think that's the accounting argument you're trying to make. If you have a low-interest loan from the DEQ, it is a requirement to have a dedicated equipment replacement fund. Same thing on the water side, and I believe you have water loan. That is a requirement of the DEQ to have a dedicated equipment replacement fund that is funded annually by quarterly rates. So you're, you're correct, in terms of current users do pay, a portion of their quarterly rates goes towards, if you will, the equipment portion of depreciation.
And that's kind of where I think we're looking at from a perspective, seeing this large quarter, these rates, understanding, have we actually allocated or allocated to new equipment or existing, trying to understand that.
Right.
The other question I had.
Mr. Girbom, there's some members of the audience are having some difficulty hearing you. If you could bring the microphone a little bit closer, I'm sorry.
The other question is, Gary, when we look at the proposal where it shows Celine against Ann Arbor in terms of the different rates, how many requests do we receive, maybe annually, for three, four, and six, six or eight inch meters?
I was going to comment on that anyway, but 99.9% are going to be the two-inch and under. I mean, you have to be of the size of jack products or CIA to get up through the larger ones, so you, very seldom will you actually need a three-inch or more rate.
And usually, that would be with a larger development anyways, in terms of the large, in Ann Arbor's case, maybe a large apartment complex or a high-rise building, probably the type of situation. The other question I had was in terms of, just from my own understanding, when we're looking at replacement of the plant and so forth, what period of time are we looking at that over? Is it 25, 30, 40, 50 years?
It depends on the nature of the asset. So if you look at the tables, W1 and S1, each of these assets have different useful lives. They're, they're not included in this table here because this calculation is based on a replacement cost approach. But, you know, for example, pumps might have a useful, typical useful life of 20 years, whereas an emergency generator, 40. Building might be 50. Pipes in the ground could be, you have to look at each asset.
No, I understand. I was just having a kind of an idea as to whether one understood exactly how those life spans were put out.
Right.
The other question I had, and this is more of a theory, in terms of meters, where you mentioned that we pay for individual meters, how do we handle when someone wants to install a separate meter for just their lawn sprinklers and so forth, or if they want to add another meter in an existing structure just to meter their own water separately? Do we charge for the full connection of everything, or do we have a separate fee that we establish?
Well, there, there is a fee schedule in the form for both the commercial and residential sprinkler meters or irrigation meters, and those are slightly more than the regular meters because there's a backflow preventer and connection fitting for that. So, but it's similar, just a little bit more. And if someone wants to meter within their own units, then that developer puts in their own meter. We only will service or measure the amount of water going through the general meter. For instance, they will only, rather than paying 25 water per, 25 meter charges, they will pay for one, two-inch rather than a bunch of three-quarter, one-inch, and then they will take upon determining the billing for their units, and then only paying us the one, otherwise you're paying all these user rate standby charges also. What they do is they economize, and they get a certain point where it's more economical for them to buy one large meter than 25 sm-. where it's more economical for them to buy one large meter than 25 small meters.
Okay, and how does that benefit or not benefit the city by that degree? Because I'm thinking if you can, if we were to charge, you know, $8,000 for 25 meters versus somebody puts in a two inch, where we would have basically $200,000 in one case and only $40,000 in the other case, and these don't account for that. I didn't know how we, so we can actually do that? So, the developers really seventing our fee structure is probably what Ann Arbor's.
They, they've always, ever since I've been here, that's always been an option under all prior councils and water programs. That's always been the option.
So, that, and as Ms. McLeod mentioned, that probably is how Ann Arbor's trying to account for probably that potential issue. So, just from my perspective, because I know individuals, when we approach redevelopment and so forth, encouraging, you know, they may want to spread the addition units and so forth. This could be a detriment in terms of adding a few meters and that sounds like a different one is putting in a meter and then doing your own. Thank you.
Good, Mr. McGirbert? Thank you, sir. Mayor for Tim Rhodes?
It's on, yeah, I know. I'm just trying to get it to the right place. Assuming that we do something with the fees here this evening, when would they take effect?
That's the question. I mean, that's, they could go into effect, you said determine the date. You know, could be, you know, July 1st, could be, but could be January 1st.
Okay, so there's no fixed date by which if we approve at a particular council meeting that it's effective for a particular date?
Correct.
As we specify it?
Correct.
Couple other questions I think are going to be answered when we get to this additional handout. Is there an option for a developer to prepay in order to not be hit with the increased costs?
No, the ordinance has always required that you can, you have to pay the cost of the connection charge at the time of occupancy. You can't bank it, like buy in advance like an investment. So, you can't buy low and sell high.
Okay. That's it for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor for Tim Rhodes. Mr. Harp?
Thank you. I have two questions. One, just I noticed in looking at the sewer connection fee results versus the water connection fee results, there's a noticeably, it seemed noticeable at least to me, higher percentage of increase on the sewer side than on the water side. Is there a particular reason for that?
It's just the value of the wastewater system compared to the value of the water system. The basic calculation is the value of the system divided by the capacity of the system and it's done, that's, that's one of the requirements of bolt, that you look at the water system and the sewer system independently. And it just, that's just the way the numbers turned out. It could have been vice versa.
And, okay, and so presumably previously we hadn't looked at it at that level of detail?
Well, I think a piece might be, and I'm not sure how accurate the comparison from the study before 2006, but we had just completed a water treatment plant facility. So, we probably had new costs for water in 2006. And now we're doing the sewer, the wastewater treatment plant. So, now we're building up those costs in this new plant.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, one, one more. I just noticed on, on page three in the actual text of the report at the top, the second sentence is the, the model consists of linked spreadsheets which can be utilized by the city to determine future water and sewer connection fees. So, are you with this providing us the same kind of tool you provided for us for water rates so that future studies can be handled much more by city staff now that we have the paradigm?
Correctly, correct. You'll get the Excel spreadsheet so staff can update it themselves down the road.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Let's do this. Mr. Ruble, do you want to briefly go over the spreadsheet that you distributed earlier this evening? And then we'll open it up for one last round of questions and then I'll try and develop some consensus on how we would like to move forward, especially if there's no additional request for information or analysis. Mr. Ruble? Mr. Gary Ruble?
As you recall, at a prior work meeting when this project was introduced and then awarded to Tetra check in the process, that we did discuss the fact that on the water and sewer user charge studies, we decided a three-step, a three-year increase, spread it out over three years rather than large impact all at one time on the users. And we estimated at that time this would be a large increase too. So, to be fair to the current new units that are being developed, that they would be given also the same privilege of if we had a three-year breaking of the rates, then that would lessen the impact on the new housing developments. And so, I drafted an inventory of the current developments and their status at, at the time back in, this is before October 1, of course, of the projects that have been approved or near approval and some in progress, some are being built. And it shows what the impact would be if they were hit with the full increase all at one time. You know, it would, it would jump from the, like on the per single unit, it would jump from the 5,545 right up to the 8,717 for the three-quarter inch meter hook. That's your average house. If you did a three-year rate, then the first year rate for that three-quarter inch meter would be $6,600 roughly and the second year rate, 7,600. Those numbers are not here because my, my numbers are based on sort of a percentage of the increase. But instead of paying the full 8,700, they would start out year one, which would be from the year from the date of which, of which you adopted this. So, it'd be, for instance, if you adopt the discedated going to affect, let's say, January 1, then after January 1, they would be paying 6,600 for a new connection on a house. Then January 1, the following year, it would jump up to like 7,660. And then the third year, they'd be at the 8,717 level. And so, the impact is shown here, there's roughly 156 units impacted by this. I yellowed in the Linden Square Phase 2 because they've, they've requested the same thing they've done in the past as the evangelical home has, that they be given the elderly housing rate, which is 30% of the connection fees. But, so the impact is a 30% impact, but it still is pretty high because they have 52 units. And so, and they, that's figured per unit too. So, they'd be 6,600 for the ones that were, basically if they get occupancy on the whole building the first year, then there's 6,600 per unit for 52 units. So, that's, that would be the breakdown of the three-year per, the three-quarter inch meter.
Questions for Mr. Ruble? Let's start on the opposite side. If you don't have a question, of course, you can just pass. Mr. Harp, any questions for Mr. Ruble? No? Mr. Rhodes, Mayor for Tim Rhodes?
Not specifically for him, but I have other comments.
Okay. Mr. McGirbert?
Just kind of clarification then. Gary, with 156 units, is the assumption that you're spreading those over a certain number of years completion or are all these occurring in the next year?
No, they, it'll be at least, for some of these, it'll be more than a year because they are not started yet. For instance, Risen Heights certainly would probably be in the first year. Curtis Park Bluffs, about half of those would probably be in the first year. So, they'd be paying the 6,600 for one year and the rest would be paying probably 7,600 for the next year. Same thing with, with Maple Oaks project that's recently been submitted. The, actually, the number of units now is up to 30 on that one instead of 20 because they have some group homes. So, they likely would have maybe less than a third of those in the first year and then the rest will come in the following, two years, at least two years out.
So, it does spread over.
Right.
And actually, as you raised that issue before in this issue about multiple units, is there any way to build into our rate where we have a two inch line, the number of actual, I don't know, units or whatever in terms of the rate? So, that we can avoid this issue where it's the, potentially somebody wanting to put in a two inch meter only paying $45,000 when in reality they would have put in 25 separate meters? Is there a way to build into the rate which wouldn't challenge bolt based on a number of units?
It doesn't come to mind just off the top of my head. I think in terms of the concept that you're using to make the argument that for the elderly housing, you know, each of these units is really not the equivalent to a home, that it's 30%.
Right, but I'm, I'm trying to say that if you had 25 single homes, and this is for other developments, not just the elderly care type situation. But if you had 25 single homes being built and if you had an apartment with 25 units and each having the same equivalent size or two bathrooms or something like that, is there any way that you could, I'm trying to figure out how to handle that evenly and basically recover the cost that we should be recovering?
Yeah, I think, I think it would require doing more of an analysis that the, the usage in, in that apartment building, is it the same as a home? Or is it something less?
The assumption that's a similar type of?
That that kind of calculation can be made. And I think by making that calculation, as you've done here with the point three calculation, you're, you're, you're trying to do a calculation that proves proportionality. Because you're making the argument that 25 units in an apartment house isn't the same impact as 25 single-family homes on the system.
Right, and I'm saying that it is because they have the same number of bathrooms or whatever facilities. Because the example being, I guess, it's fair to you none here, that would be the example where it was originally 25 separate condo units and now it's 30 units in three buildings. So, I'm trying to figure out how would that as an example play out?
Yeah, I actually may have misspoke on that. Multiple meter situation is the, the option of having a one large meter versus a number of small meters really doesn't change the amount that we charge. We still charge per unit. They still would be paying the same rate for 25 eight inch or 20, 25 three-quarter inch. They still would be paying that. But if they didn't want meters at every location and would rather have one meter and bill all their tenants. So, they have the option of choosing the one large meter versus all the small meters. But they still pay the rate the same as if they were a single unit and a single meter.
That's what I wanted to say.
So, I'm sorry, I misspoke on that.
Got it, thank you, Gary.
You good, Mr. McGirbert? Mr. Seo?
Yes, thank you. Now, Mr. Ruble, on your sheet, under the water and sewer connection charge line, where you have the aggregates, and it's highlighted in yellow. Going across, just so I understand this, the five-year rate is listed at 6,654, correct? That fourth line, all the way over to the right, under five-year rate.
Are you looking at just Linden, Linden Square or no?
No, no, I'm looking water and sewer connection charge. The first highlighted line.
Sorry, it's green on mine, but actually those numbers are, are not formulated 100% correct?
No, no, but let me see if I understand this correctly. What you're saying there is if we increase this over five years, the first year impact would be a charge of 6,654? Is that correct? Roughly?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, I just, and it goes up with the four-year rate because we charge a higher?
I think you're correct. That's the first year, that's, that would be the cumulative difference of the first year.
All right, and then the elderly housing connection rate, it says point three REU. Residential what?
It's residential equivalency unit.
Oh, equivalent.
It's common in some, some cities actually establish rates by REUs, you know, which is a common question and why, why, and we do it by meter and not meter size and not REU.
Okay.
It's much more complex to do it under REU and I think your life would run into a lot of inconsistency if you do it that way, especially when a, a project may have a change of use later on. And then it becomes a little bit difficult to monitor, maintain, and actually try to compensate for the difference in charges.
Is that 30% rate for elderly housing considered pretty consistent?
Right, there was a study done when this came up with the evangelical homes in Michigan back in the 1990s. And that held, that held true when we checked it again when Linden Square Phase 1 was developed four years ago. And it's, is in agreement with the standards that Vic has referred to as well as the 10 state standards, which are used throughout Midwest, I guess.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seo. Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Mr. Ruble answered my first question with the clarification about the connections because that was a big concern. And then going back to the first, to the top part of your chart here on these three, four, five-year rates. So, that's a standard point, so it's three years from the date established. So, if people jump in in year two, they're going to be at that rate level, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Ms. McLeod?
No questions.
No questions, okay. Additional questions and of course you can ask, ask questions to anybody who's part of the presentation. Mr. McGirbert?
And this one's more for the overall rate process. Since we know that we didn't do a rate study for 10 years and when you look at it, it's a 68% increase on one, on the sewer rates and then 34% on water. Can we apply a regular inflation factor every year to attempt to try and keep up to date? With water and sewer?
No, we wouldn't recommend that. You can do that, and, and the rate model will give you that, that these Excel spreadsheets. You certainly can look at the engineering news record increase every year, which is basically a version of the consumer price index. But you also have to look at additions to the infrastructure and deletions to it in order to do it correctly. So, for example, if you had a major water plant expansion that wasn't, this, a major cost that was out of the norm, if you simply did an increase each year for inflation, it wouldn't necessarily reflect that. So, we wouldn't recommend that. But that's why the Excel tool is, is there so that you can do a more accurate calculation.
So, but in the future, we can now adjust this annually to make our corrections so that we are adjusting these every year, not every 10 years?
You can choose to adjust it every year. I think many communities typically do it about every five years. If you look at the, again, Manual M1, they, I think they use the five years as being a typical time period that communities reevaluate their connection fees.
Okay.
But you certainly can, you certainly will have the tool to look at it every year.
Yeah, and that was my concern, otherwise we'd have to do this study more frequently. This sounds like we're already set up to do that in the future. Thank you.
Mr. McGirbert, Mr. Ruble, do you have a quick comment?
I'd say the only thing that would impact our thoughts on that to do it annually would be the fact that if once, if you adopt the three-year program, you're going to set a rate based on this study at this amount. But I'm certain that you can adjust it. You don't have to commit to the second year now. You can look at the second year rate if there's an adjustment in the model that is performed by Joanne. So, then, you know, just in case you want to make up some difference if there's a big, some cataclysmic expense or something, you might want to think about that. Otherwise, you shouldn't have to do it for three years theoretically because things aren't growing that fast.
No, thank you. Additional questions, Ms. Dillon and then Mr. Rhodes? And then I want to try and develop some consensus here. And of course, we got to break, early enough to break down these tables against the public consensus. So, Ms. Dillon?
Is there a reason why we have not done this in 10 years?
I think basically because the economy was very flat. We were facing some large upcoming expenses. So, it would have been just a major guess at a lot of this stuff. But now there's real good data and there's growth and it's a good time to plan.
Mr. Rhodes?
Is the revenue from the current connection fees maintained in a separate account? Or, and if not, what's the balances in our current water and sewer funds?
Joanna, do you want to address that?
What was the question?
Repeat the question one more time, Mr. Rhodes.
I was wondering if the revenue from the current connection fees is put into a separate account within the water and sewer?
It's a separate line.
Okay.
It's calculated when we look at the budgets for the year. Gary, we'll give you an estimate of new homes or whatever development we project and then currently it's at the lower rate and that's what's calculated in the budget.
Can you tell me what the approximate balance is in those accounts? Can you tell me what the approximate balance is in those accounts?
I think they're in the seventies. I don't have a healthy budget for the year, but.
Is that, that's sort of?
Seventeen, but I think it's going to be three, probably eighteen, if something's to go with construction.
That sort of influences my thinking about how much of an increase we need to do if we've got a significant balance already available to us.
Do you want to get those figures, and we can email them out to the group, or you can even get them right now, can't you?
I can.
Okay. Mr. Gierbaugh, did you have additional questions?
Yeah, I was just going to stay with that. I mean, considering that we've put out some significant money in terms of the new sewer lines and so forth, I'm thinking our overall fund balance has dropped. But we don't reserve those new connection fees as a separate fund, do we? In terms of how we?
No.
No. There's no reserve in that. That's what I thought. So really, the issue is, in our case, we spent a significant dollar amount recently into do sewers, so I'm thinking our fund balance is basically at the limit that it should be at.
Yeah.
So, and then, yeah, then one other comment that I wanted to make is that I have a concern that if we move these rates up too quickly, that we're going to slow down any development within our community, and I don't want that to happen. The most common complaint that I hear from developers, builders working in Ann Arbor is the cost of the water and sewer connection, because that goes to the cost of the house that the homeowner has to pay, of course. And if we do raise rates, I would like to suggest that there's a way to exempt those current developments that are underway from that rate increase, because those people who did that, the financials on that, use the old rates. And I don't want to put an undue burden on them.
Any other questions for the group?
Yeah, this, for FY seventeen, where the revenue that we're expecting to generate source, below a hundred and seventy thousand, and no, we're seeing that with new water at the current low rates.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne.
There is no reserve, so.
Right. One last opportunity for questions, and then I do want to get consensus here. Mr. CEO?
Mr. Rubel, earlier, in response to Mr. Gierbaugh's question, you said that there's an additional fee. Let me, let me set out the example. So I have an existing home with a single water meter right now. I want to add a second water meter for sprinkler. Would I have to pay another connection fee, or just the cost of the meter itself?
That's just a meter cost, and then you just pay water only on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, mindful of the time, I do want to see if we can develop a consensus to move forward. I'll begin, and then I'll start again to my left with Mr. Harp, of course, Mayor for Tim Rhodes, has already articulated something of a position. First of all, I want to thank our guests from Tetra Tech as well as city staff for their work on this. This is very comprehensive, very detailed. It's great data to receive when you're making a policy decision of this nature. So, and thank you for your time this evening. I think these recommendations are well thought out, well grounded, they make sense. But I also concur with the sentiments expressed by Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes about having our business community and our developers specifically absorb some of this cost. We say time and time again, in fact, I say it ad nauseam, and I don't regret saying it ad nauseam, that we pride ourselves on being a pro-business community, and we have to have policies and procedures and approaches that reflect that sentiment. So my preference would be to implement these changes, increase over a three- to five-year period, and most likely begin the implementation in accordance with our fiscal year, something that mirrors our fiscal year beginning July 1. So that's my preference. I don't need any additional information on this at this time. I think this was very thoughtful, very thorough, and appreciate it. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Tahar, and please make sure you have the microphone.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to say I appreciated the, getting the information in advance and how clear it was, and for the layperson relatively easy to understand. So I felt well-prepared to, for the discussion. Did I? No, it's still on. Okay. I would, also, I guess I would say, I don't know about deadlines for starting and stopping, or for beginning the changes. I think that we do need to change the rates, and I think I would prefer as long a possible phase-in period as we can do, again, in deference for development that's currently underway.
Mr. Rhodes, anything you'd like to add?
I support the waiting for, spreading it over three to five years. And I would like to come up with a way to exempt the current developments, because some of them are not going to be ready for meter installation even by July 1 of next year.
Yeah, I'm fine with the idea of three to five years. Likely the, even a four-year would be fine. Part of the concern that we have here is that we do have a huge increase that has not been implemented in 10 years, so, and as construction's starting up, we need to really get things in the line. As for exemption, I would rather just, as you said, use the July 1 date, and hopefully that construction in certain cases can occur before then, and the occupancy can occur.
Mr. CEO?
I concur entirely with Mr. Gierbaugh's position, that we begin July 1 and adopt a three-to-five-year schedule for the implementation.
Okay. Ms. Dillon?
I concur with Mr. Gierbaugh and Mr. CEO.
Okay. Ms. McClellan?
Just make it easy for me, but yes, I would concur with the last three of my colleagues.
Okay. So the consensus is, instead of exempting certain parties to begin implementation on July 1, is that correct, from a majority of council? And then the other thing I need to get consensus on, and I started the ambiguity, so blame me. We've thrown out three years, we've thrown out four years, we've thrown out five years. Let's try and narrow that a bit. Do you have a preference, Mr. Harp? You five?
Five.
Five. Mr. Gierbaugh?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Four?
Five.
Five?
Five.
Well, let's say five. And I suspect that Mr. Gierbaugh, Mr. CEO won't lose any sleep over that. Okay. Very good. Staff feel like they have the consensus that they need from this group?
Excuse me, so proposed five-year limitation beginning July 4, 2017, and as you're acting, which we'll get to, is it possible?
I think that sounds good. Okay. Excellent. Any additional comments from staff or our guests from Tetra Tech? This is a good discussion, and it took just about an hour, so, well done. If there's nothing further from my council colleagues, we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, is requested, excuse me, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. And if you have citizen comments, we would appreciate if you come to the podium and speak or the microphone. Are there any citizen comments? Then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at, let's make that 7:28. Moved by Tahar, seconded by Gierbaugh. All those in favor of adjourning this work meeting signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.